We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the ninth of February to order. Mr. Daniels, will you please lead us in the flag loops?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Van, if we may have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins, present. Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner is absent and excused. Vice Mayor Miller?
Present.
And Mayor Slowey?
Present.
So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, February 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. Next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Stand. Motion carries. Presentations. We have two, so Amy, if you want to read the first one.
So the first presentation, number four, is a top 20 presentation, Things We Love About Citrus Heights.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Carter, City Manager's Office. I'm sure everybody is really excited after that riveting study session, so we're going to get into something a little lighthearted. Not that it wasn't done well. So the 20th anniversary of Citrus Heights Cityhood is in 2017, so we're doing different activities throughout the year to celebrate the city's 20th anniversary. And one of the activities we're doing is a top 20 list every month in 2017. So our top 20 list this month is Things You Love About Citrus Heights. We did one last month as well, the City Awards and Accomplishments. And if you missed that list, you can find it on the city's website. There's a link on the main page of citrusheights.net. This list was special in February because it was one of our social media submission lists. We use the city's Twitter account to try to get the community more involved, and we also partnered with some San Juan High School students on their senior project, which was really fun. So this is a preview of all of the upcoming lists. I'll come back each month at the first council meeting of the month to announce the month's list. So let's get into the San Juan Senior High School Project. If you want to come up, Brandon, and introduce your group.
Welcome, gentlemen and ladies.
Hello, Mayor and Council Board. My name is Brandon. This is Sarah. This is Matthew. This, for our senior project this year, we go to San Juan, and we have been working, we've been working with Stephanie to create some sort of commemoration for this 20th anniversary of Citrus Heights. And we went to the...
The kickoff event?
Yeah. We went to the kickoff event for the 20th anniversary, and we interviewed just some people around the event to see what they loved about Citrus Heights, to commemorate the February list. And we have been working on this since, I don't know, around December or so, and this is what we've come up with.
My favorite thing about Citrus Heights is it feels like home. This is where I grew up, so it's home. It's a place where people do a lot of harm. People really get involved. It's a big place.
Oh, well, it's a new community, and it's a great place.
Community. No matter where you go, you always find friendly people there. You always want a helping hand. They tell you about everything that's going on in the community.
Just a sense of community pride.
I would say the people. Some of my other cities, they're a little bit more stressful to deal with, so I would say the people here, they're really fun and energetic.
Favorite thing about Citrus Heights is the ladies auxiliary. These are the ones that won. That is my favorite thing about Citrus Heights. I think it's inspired.
My favorite thing about Citrus Heights is probably the creeks and the field areas that we played in when we were from sites is, as soon as we incorporated, the city automatically started getting cleaner. I really like that, as well as the community.
There's this really good sense of community, and everyone just kind of gets along the mills together, and we're all working towards, you know, just making the city a better place to live.
About Citrus Heights, probably the people. I was, they're always so nice and kind, and I always feel like a strong sense of community over here.
My favorite thing about Citrus Heights is the volunteerism. It's a small community. Everybody hits a ball. Everybody has great ideas, and the city embraces it. It's an awesome city. I love it.
My favorite thing about Citrus Heights is it feels like home. You're right, you grew up. It's home.
Twice. All right. Good job.
So thank you to Brandon and Matthew and Sarah. They did a really, really good job, and we appreciate it. We're going to post their video on the city's YouTube page, or Twitter page, sorry, so we can share it with the community and hopefully drum up a little more community participation for our next top 20 list, because it's really a fun thing. We did get quite a few submissions, though, this time on our Twitter account. We got some really fun ones. This is a little sneak peek. And we took all of the Twitter submissions. We also got a few by email that we included, and we came up with this top 20 list, top 20 things we love about Citrus Heights. Number one thing was the people. We heard it in many different ways. We received just a ton of feedback, the people, community spirit, volunteerism, specifically in here, the senior community, all kinds of accolades for the community of Citrus Heights. So that was by far the number one response. We also received responses about the police department, creeks and nature preserves, San Juan High School, oak trees, New City Hall, retail stores and restaurants. It was really fun. The whole list will be posted on the city's website. If you go to the homepage on citrusheights.net, there's a direct link to the top 20 list. And whenever you're, if you're in the Twitter world, if you use the hashtag CHturns20, we use that hashtag to search for the different entries, entries, so that way we can include everyone's submissions in our, in our list. So stay tuned. The next list for March is Top 20 Neighborhood Projects, and we'll be here at the March 9th City Council meeting to release that list. Any questions?
No, thank you very much. Stephanie, we'll look forward to seeing another one next month.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
And again, thank you to our San Juan students for preparing that nice video for us. It was nice to see, you know, various residents up there, and no politicians in your movie, so good move. Good move. All right. Next item, Amy.
The next item is presentation, presentation number five, presentation by Republic Services.
Our favorite refuse company.
We love to hear that. Good evening, Mayor Slowey, and members of the council. Good afternoon, or evening. I'm Johnny Downs, and I am the Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services. And as you know, we are the exclusive provider for waste and recycling services for the residents of Citrus Heights. And each year, we like to give an annual report to the city council of all the things, all the services that we provide, and our partnership with the city, as well as our engagement in the community in general. Here we go. So as your service provider, Republic Services proudly offers a vast array of services to the residents of Citrus Heights. We offer curbside trash and recycling and green waste collection. We offer appointment-based pickup of home-generated sharps, curbside collection of used motor oil and oil filters. Three times a year, we offer bulky waste cleanups, and three times a year, we host household hazardous waste collection events. We host composting workshops. We also offer curbside household batteries collection. During the months of November through January, we offer extra leaf collection, where residents can fill up to six 30-gallon bags of leaves, and we pick that up at no extra cost. And the three weeks following Christmas, we pick up Christmas trees and do Christmas tree recycling. We offer, also offer assistance for those with physical limitations. And every year, I always love, we produce the Citrus Heights Customer Service Guide and Calendar. So, excuse me, a big part of what we do as a service provider is outreach and education. And one of the ways we do this is by offering school presentations. And over, actually, over the last year, we made that program more robust in that we added more materials, more interactive activities, and more, yeah, more interactive, active activities with the students. And as you can see, we presented to nearly 900 students throughout four schools, Arlington Heights, Lykan K-8, Mariposa Avenue Elementary, and Kingswood K-8. And in the presentation, students learned about the cycle of waste, the importance of reduction and recycling, and how to properly recycle items. And we also introduced the fourth R. Most people are familiar with the three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle. However, the state of California over the past few years has had a big push and focus on recycling organics, or the fourth R, which is rot, the natural decomposition of food and green waste. So we incorporated that into the curriculum as well. We also talked to the kids about the, about littering and not littering. Each class, at the end of the presentation, received a reusable bag made from recycled material, a recycling poster, and an "I took the pledge" poster. And each student received a pencil made from recycled material and an "I took the pledge" button. And the pledge that they take is they pledge to reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot every opportunity, or every chance that they get. So that's a program that actually we're very proud of. As I said, we've made that program more robust. This year, we, or, excuse me, in 2016, we presented to 896 students. In 2015, that number was 589 students, and at three schools. So in 2016, we presented to 307 more students and added a school. So we're pretty proud of that. And I have to point out, a lot of that has to do with our awesome recycling coordinator, Anna Roulan, and she actually does the presentations. And I walked to her desk today, and she personally makes the "I take the pledge" buttons and stamps them, and it's a pretty tedious task. So, but we're very proud of that program. Also, in our, what we do is, we have an annual, annual poster contest, and this year, in the theme of to help celebrate Citrus Heights turning 20, our theme was "My Favorite Thing About Citrus Heights." So we are continuing with the city's theme as well. And also very excited that this was the biggest competition yet, with over 1,000 entries, the most that we've ever received, and nine public schools participated, as well as various home schools. And you see the schools listed there that participated. And out of those 1,000 entries, we could only pick 13 winners. And these are the winners. We had two from Skycrest, two from Carriage Drive, one from Lykan, one from Woodside, excuse me, two from Woodside, four from Sylvan, one from Mariposa, and one from Kingswood. And each winner received a $25 gift card, a certificate of accomplishment, as well as recognition at the City Heights City Council meeting, as you can see by the great picture that we have there. And we also presented Arlington Elementary with a $500 gift card, as they were the school that had the most participation. So in addition to our education and outreach in schools, a big part of what we do is education and outreach in the communities as well, and promoting sustainable practices. And one way we do this is hosting composting workshops. And we hosted six classes in 2016. There were two in April, two in June, and two in October. And these composting workshops are free for Citrus Heights residents. We hold them at the Sunrise Mall with, as part of the farmer's market. And the workshops, one is a traditional composting workshop, and one is vermiculture, worm. And each participant receives a free compost bin, as well as literature on composting. And one lucky winner gets to walk away with a working worm bin that's raffled off. So that, it's actually, it has become very popular, and sometimes we've actually had standing room only. And I think you've attended at least one of them, or you were planning?
I actually want a worm bin.
Ah, nice.
How's that working out for you?
Nice.
Tell you later.
Okay, well, another way that we encourage and try to educate residents on how to recycle properly is the good old-fashioned way, with money. And how we do that is we reward residents for recycling properly. So each year, during a designated time, usually in March, and one's coming up soon, a Republic Services lucky recycling coordinator, Anna Roulan, gets to randomly inspect your recycling bins. And she, she goes through each neighborhood, and we, we inspect the, excuse me, recycling bins for each of the neighborhood areas, and the first one that we get to that does not have any contaminants or non-recyclable items, they win $100. And we choose one from each of the 10 areas, so there's 10 total, and each winner is awarded a $100 gift card and acknowledged at the city council meeting. And when they get here, they are entered into a raffle to win an additional $200. So we try to use different fun ways and to get people to recycle and, and know how to use sustainable practices. Another free service that we provide to Citrus Heights residents is we host three household hazardous waste drop-off events each year. And this provides a safe and responsible way for residents to dispose of their hazardous, toxic, and poisonous items. And all they have to do is they bring their, their household hazardous waste to Sunrise Mall, excuse me, to Sunrise Mall, whom we partner with, and they simply drop it off. So they don't have to worry about how to dispose of it. They just bring it to us, and we handle it from there. And as you can see, this has actually gained a lot of traction as well. In April, we had 569 cars that were serviced. In June, 755 cars. And in October, 782 cars, which totaled 2,106 cars that we serviced in 2016. And as you can see from the graph below, that each year, that number has increased. It was a slight increase from 2014 to 15, and then a 51% increase in 2016. And that's pretty huge. So we know, and we feel good, that people are actually getting rid of their hazardous waste responsibly. So an important part of who we are as a company is encompassing what we call our five Rs. And if you've heard me talk about Republic Services any time, you've heard this before. And I usually mention it because it's something I really believe in, and it's what our company stands for, and it's that we strive to be respectful, responsible, reliable, resourceful, and relentless in all we do every day. And really, what that boils down to is just doing the right thing. And so how that translates into us and the community is, it's not us just being a service provider, but also being a part of the community and supporting the community. And so what we did is list here some of the ways that Republic Services is involved in and supports the community with some of the organizations, the Chamber of Commerce Installation Awards Dinner, the Chamber of Commerce Best of Citrus Heights Awards Dinner, and last year, we did receive the award as the best utility and the best of the best, so we were pretty proud of that. We support the Veterans Stand Down Dare to Prepare. We participated in the Red, White, and Blue Parade, as you can see from the colorful pictures there of, and the awesome hats. The Community Campout, our general manager, Tony, likes to get in and make the pancakes. We support Hot August Fights, Sunday Fun Day. We supported the Bayside Serve Day. We supported the Project Ride Crab Feed, the Kiwanis Club Crab Feed, the Rotary Club Crab, excuse me, Rotary Crab Feed. We supported the Police Activities League Banquet, the Seroptimus Brew Fest, the Police Activities League Traffic Safety Day, the Russian American Media Multicultural Business Expo, the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue, which benefited veterans. We participated in the Halloween Parade, and that's our operations manager and his son. As you can see, we really got into it. We got, had a fun time with that. We supported the Veterans Community Center's Open House and their Toys for Tots Drive, and as always, the Christmas tree lighting. So that's just really a snapshot there of some of the things. And people always say, "I see you everywhere," and that's because we try to be everywhere and try to be a part of everything. And just kind of adding on to what was said earlier, the people of Citrus Heights make it so easy, and we really just love doing it. This here is actually my favorite slide, and I always love to go over it, because as a service provider, yes, we provide your recycling and waste services, but more than that, we are environmental stewards. And part of that responsibility is making sure that we divert as much as we can from the landfill. So this is a snapshot of all the material that we collected in 2016, what actually went to the landfill, and what we were able to divert from the landfill or recycle in some form or in some way. So we collected and went to the landfill 2,000, excuse me, 20,828 tons of trash, 438 yards of illegal dumping, 1,508 tons of bulky items, and we were able to divert 10,776 tons of green waste, 6,382 tons of recycling, 166 tons of appliances, 3,804 tons of bulky items, 7,501 gallons of used motor oil, 2,077 used oil filters, 1,977 bags of batteries, and 20 tons of e-waste, and 859 containers of sharps. And when you total all of those, we diverted 21,186 tons of material from the landfill.
Question before you go on. And I know to count to our numbers, you take the green waste and the recycling to get to that 50% number. Little surprised the recycling isn't higher. How does that number compare to some of the other jurisdictions that you folks work with? Do you have any idea?
Offhand, I think it's probably, and don't quote me, I'd have to go back and check the numbers. I think you're about on par with Rancho. I think El Grove does a little bit more in the recycling area.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. To give you an even clearer picture of what this looks like, through our curbside services, our residential campaigns, the collection, drop-off events, and education, Republic Services achieved an annual residential diversion level of 48.7%. And that's huge. That's nearly 50%. So as a whole, I mean, we're blowing it out of water here. And as you can see, that number has increased each year, with our minimum goal being 40%. So in 2014, it was just slightly over. We improved and increased that in 2015, and like I said, we're almost at 50% diversion, and that's, that's huge. So as a whole, the city is blowing it out, blowing out of water, park, yeah, we're doing well. So as a service provider, one thing we always say is, we, our service is who we are. So it's always great to hear when we provide great service, when people give us that feedback. And this is some of, some of the feedback that we received, that we just wanted to share with the council and everyone here. Edith called in and said, "All of your drivers do such a good job." Elizabeth said, "Customer service is so helpful and friendly every time I call in." Barbara said, "Just wanted to say thank you for the fast pickup." "Thank you for providing awesome service," said Rod. "And my recycle driver goes above and beyond to service my containers," from Greg. Lorraine said, "My drivers do a fantastic job. I really value them." An anonymous compliment we received was, "Thank you to all who were part of the Trim Your Waste campaign." We love that. "I learned a lot. I'm passing on my newly learned knowledge to friends and family." And then Andrew said, "We absolutely love, love, love our trash lady." And we love, love, love to hear that. So all of this, everything that I've gone over, is everything that we do, and everything that we do and have done in the city of Citrus Heights, and the Citrus Heights residents has among the lowest, if not the lowest, rates in almost the entire region. And even with a 3% increase this year, the rates are still, residents are still paying today less than they paid in 2010, 2011, and 2012. So, and on top of that, there will be no more increases for the next three years until 2020. So that's pretty awesome. It's always great that we provide a great service, but it's also, feels good that we can provide it at a great rate. So before I wrap up, mark your calendars. Trim Your Waste is coming up in March, the month of March. A Republic Services representative, I've already pointed out to you, will be looking through residential recycling carts, so all of those of you in TV land and in the audience, make sure there are no contaminants, and you could be that lucky winner of a $100 gift card. And we will have one for each of the 10 neighborhood areas. And also, mark your calendar for April 8th for two events. First, the Household Hazardous Waste Event, the first one of the year this year, will be from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Sunrise Mall in the parking lot behind Macy's. Come in, drop off your toxic and poisonous items for free. You don't need a reservation, but it's always great and makes it easier if you have one. So here's the number, and you can also find the number on your Customer Service Guide calendar. And after you drop off your household hazardous waste, you can drive right across the parking lot and come and sit in on one of the composting workshops. And that, the two workshops, one is held at 9:30 and one is held at 11:30, and you can learn how to compost in your own backyard. And you can call Anna for, to make a reservation. We also have handouts of this in the back, if you didn't get a chance to jot those numbers down. So speaking of Ms. Anna Roulan, which I've mentioned a few times, in case you didn't realize, you have a celebrity in your midst. Earlier this year, Republic Services did a company-wide contest to find the recycling superstar. And throughout, over, throughout our entire company nationwide, over 30,000 employees, the Sacramento Business Unit, our business unit, won the recycling superstar. We didn't really win. It was led by Anna. Anna did the whole thing, masterminded it all. And she won first place and is the official Republic Services Recycling Superstar. So I wanted to share this with you because it's huge. She preaches it, she teaches it. The whole point for Republic Services was to see who really walks, talks the talk and walks the walk, and Anna does it every day. So here's the quick video that won us, won her national acclaim.
Whoa, this recycling superstar contaminated. You were just going to recycle this whole thing in a cardboard box full of paper. This isn't empty, it isn't clean, and it's definitely not dry. Try again.
And she calls herself a recycling superstar, whatever that means. She comes and sorts through my trash to make sure that I recycle properly.
Got to the point where I dread coming to work. She's just crazy. She takes recycling way too seriously.
Recycling's for this day. Just kidding, every day's recycle day.
She makes us answer recycling questions every week.
Hey, do you guys see the question of the week? Do you want me to tell you what it is? It's really hard this week. Okay, listen. So it's, how does one properly recycle a container? Any questions? No, Esther? Okay, I'll tell you. It's empty, clean, dry. Isn't that exciting?
So today, we're having intervention. I mean, recycling's cool, bad, and what? This is an intervention.
No, guys, actually, this is an intervention for all of you.
No, we're intervening you. Lately, you've been taking your role as recycling coordinator way too seriously.
No, 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 no. I'm intervening. All right, guys, say it with empty. Please, guys. Empty.
Empty.
Clean.
Clean.
Dry.
Dry.
Empty, clean, 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 dry.
That was great.
So good, good job, Anna. Can you go, I want to go back to your presentation-
Uh-huh.
And go to the slide with the rates on it.
Okay.
Third from the end. Go back three pages. Be reverse. There you go.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, this is very important to point out because I know it was a negotiation between the city and Republic, but two things, you said no more increases for three years. You know, when this contract was written, just so you know, yes, right now, we're at 2140, but at the same time, the City of Roseville was over $27 for the same size can, i.e. the $64 can. And the City of Sacramento was almost $34 for the same. So Republic is not only doing a fantastic job, they're doing it less expensive than most of the cities. And I would fairly say that we are probably the outsider of, you know, Elk Grove and Rancho, one of the least expensive contracts in Northern California. So good job to Republic, good job to the city.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Anna.
Yeah, that was great. Did you get-
Well done.
A big raise? Do I need to call Tony? I mean, come on, what-
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Because that was pretty funny.
And she really is that serious about it, yes.
And real quick, I wanted to speak to the service. I think that's the next slide, the quotes you had. Regardless, I just wanted to complain because the wheel of my recycle bin fell off, and it was a Friday afternoon, and I called it in expecting it would be Monday, and someone showed up late Friday with the new recycle bin. And I thought it was because I was a council member, but no, you do that for everybody. So I'm really torked. No, I appreciate the service. Those quotes are spot on.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you all. We are proud and honored to be your service provider, and we look forward to another great year and great years to come.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Great. Jeannie, we'll start with you if you don't mind, ma'am.
Thank you. We had a regional sand meeting yesterday, and a couple of things to report out. We, we are participating, we voted to approve $25,000 to help the cleanup of the abandoned boat abatement on the Sacramento River. And even though this is not our responsibility per se, it's something that's done mostly by Yolo County and the city of West Sacramento. But because as an agency, as a district, we care deeply about the quality of water that flows down the Sacramento River, and these abandoned boats really contaminate them, we felt that was important to participate in. And then we had a report out from an advisory committee. You all know that we're involved in this about roughly $2 billion upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant, and some of the contracts that we had last year were challenged by bidders that did not win the bid. And part of the bid process fell under criticism. So this advisory committee made up of several board members and some staff was formed. They hired an outside, county council was also there, and then they hired an outside law firm to also help in the process. And they came up with five recommendations, all of which, most of which, I'll say, are very, will help a lot. One of them was called the Cone of Silence. And what this had, what this, none of these have been implemented yet, but the Cone of Silence basically was saying that no project, no one on staff or on the board should talk to anybody or may talk to anybody who has a pending bid or protest, or that bid will be thrown out. So we took a strong look at that and really felt that it needed to be looked at further and vetted because it was a very stringent and potentially limiting provision in this advisory committee recommendation. And it's something that we as council members also have, have to pay attention to because we just got done with two hours of ethics training before this council meeting, and one of the issues that was brought up in that, which we all are aware of, is that we have to go into our decision-making process as a public body without any preconceived prejudices. And so, so that, this solicited a lot of discussion back and forth, and if you have nothing better to do, you can tune in on the regional sand meeting that plays on Metro TV and kind of get an idea of what was discussed. It's coming back to us eventually for a vote, but that was the big topic yesterday. I'd also like to announce that our PAL board, our PAL is hosting a poker tournament next Thursday, a week from tonight, at Stones to support the PAL program and the run. Where's Jason? Is he here? No, he's left, okay. So if you are a poker player or would like to be a poker player, because I'm sure they'll walk you through it and would like to do it for a good cause, I'll look on the PAL website, and you can find out how to sign up. I'd also like to congratulate, does Jenny's left? She left already. She was installed last Friday as the Chamber of Commerce's Chairman of the Board, and so she'll be leading the chamber for the next year. And then also tomorrow, the Fill the Boot will kick off officially at 8:30 at Sunrise Mall. So as you're driving around this weekend, be sure to put a buck or so in the boot that the firemen have with them as they are approaching cars. Be careful, we don't want to lose any of them. And all the proceeds go to the Burn Institute. And that's it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Mr. Daniels.
I would just like to compliment the city manager, staff, and everybody that worked on keeping the drains cleared again, you know, incredible job. We've been hitting so much rain and driving around a lot, and I haven't hit one flooded area yet, and I drive around a lot, I really do. And so thank you for another great job.
That's it, all right. Vice Mayor, Miller?
I didn't have any board meetings since our last council meeting, but did also want to say that the three of us joined Jeannie at the Chamber Officer Installation Dinner back on the 27th. And today, Jeannie and I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting. We had a presentation from the developer on the proposed residential property at Mitchell Farms, which is the executive golf course behind PetSmart in that area off Arcadia. Jeannie did also talk about our 20th anniversary for the Marketplace Board and the awareness campaign, and updated them on the medical office building. And they also approved their 2016 financial statement. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, Secog met last week. The only thing of note, we are coming up with a bike share program, if you don't know what that is. Essentially, while it won't affect Citrus Heights initially, Sacramento, West Sacramento, and Davis, they will have 22 different bike stations with bikes. And essentially, you go up, put your credit card in, charges you, you take a bike, you can use it for as long as you want, obviously, you pay for it while you have it. And there's a phone app that will show you where all the stations are, so if you're in downtown Sacramento and ambitious enough to ride to downtown Davis, you can see on an app where there's an open station to park your bike. You can ride there. As soon as you check it in, you're stopped being charged. If you had a meeting, you could go to that, come back out, pick up another bike. It's very common in some of the bigger cities, and, you know, I think it's actually going to be an interesting trial for those three cities to try it. The goal is to expand it out. Again, not so sure it's viable so much in Citrus Heights, but I think we all go downtown once in a while, so it's not, not a bad idea. Attended the Asian Pacific Chamber Officers Installation, which was, actually, I have to say, probably one of the better rubber chicken dinners I've had at the Hyatt Hotel. It was a pretty good dinner. The city manager and myself attended, it was actually the second meeting of the Getting to Zero Campaign, specific about homeless and housing sponsored by Sutter. They invited all the municipalities in a six, or three-county region. So we went to more, to see what's going on, you know, you don't want to be the only agency that doesn't show up. I do have to say, though, from our perspective, our navigator program that we're doing within the city is working out quite well, as well as the HART, Homeless Assistance Resource Team, the group that was formed last year. They had their first, what do I want to call it? Emergency shelter?
Winter Sanctuary.
Winter Sanctuary, that's right, which was open for six weeks. The nice thing was, it was all run by, you know, the private sector and local churches were the actual sanctuaries at night. And so people all went to the same place to check in, and depending upon where that sanctuary was for the evening, they were bused from there, and they were provided a warm meal and a place to sleep for the night. And let's be honest, it's been crummy weather for the last six weeks, so this started right after Christmas, and I think it ends this week or it already ended, I'm not sure. But good, good start, and it's great to see that the public sector, I'm sorry, the private sector actually came up with what I thought was a pretty ingenious and low-cost way to do something. Last Monday, I guess that was just a few days ago, attended the REACH Board Meeting, and even though we'll have plenty of time to talk about it between now and then, March 6th, they're having their annual potluck, that's a Monday night across the hallway, I believe it starts at 5:30 or 6:00. Had the library board budget meeting today, nothing earth-shattering out of there. The last thing Jeannie had mentioned, Fill the Boot, but again, we're having not the greatest weather, you know, the Sac Metro Fire puts this on, and they've been doing it for the last 20 years. Never had a firefighter injured in the, at the intersection of Sunrise and Greenback, which you know is pretty busy, in fact, it's the third busiest intersection in the county. So if you see them out there, because they will be out there through Sunday, just please, especially with the weather slowdown, I don't want to see in the news that, you know, this was the first year that we had an accident out there, so just be forewarned. With that, those are all the updates. So next item, Amy.
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times. And at this time, I have not received any public comment cards.
You're going to blow our, you know, public comment cards, Mr. Logomoroshino? Okay, please step up to the microphone. I thought you were going to give us 30 minutes back of our evening, but apparently not. So please, take your time.
Michael Logomoroshino, REACH Board Member, correction, the March 6th potluck will be at the community center.
Okay, thank you for that. 29 minutes back, thank you. Since I made the mistake, I'll give you that. All righty, so next item would be, well, Amy, next item.
So consent calendar items six, seven, eight, and nine.
All righty, any council member wish to pull any of the four items? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move we approve consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Item 10, Amy.
So item 10, the subject is amendments to the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to the term of members of the Planning Commission and History and Arts Commission. And the recommendation is to introduce and read by title only and waive the first full reading of an ordinance amending the Citrus Heights Municipal Code regarding the terms of members of the History and Arts Commission and the Planning Commission. So I'll present this item. So the item before you tonight is an ordinance amendment clarifying the terms of members of the History and Arts Commission and the Planning Commission. Currently, the code states that no member of the commissions shall serve for more than eight years. So to further clarify a member's terms, staff is proposing to amend to the code to include the following. So the first, no member of the History and Arts or Planning Commission shall serve for more than eight consecutive years, so adding the word consecutive. The second is an individual who has served eight years may be eligible for reappointment to the commission after two years have passed, so after they've had a break in service for two years. And then third is a partial term would be exempt from the calculation of the consecutive years served on the commission. And so a partial term would be defined as lasting less than two years, if it were normally a four-year term, and a term lasting less than one year, if it was normally a two-year term. And then lastly, this is a cleanup item, the ordinance would be formally codified that at-large members of the History and Arts Commission serve two-year terms. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on the Duncan Resolution?
Shall be known as, yes. Mr. Daniels.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing it right. So it's eight years or eight consecutive years?
Consecutive.
Eight consecutive years.
So if somebody serves eight years-
Goes away for two.
Excuse me, six years, and takes two years off, and comes back to serve a four-year, is that going to be okay with this language?
Well, I guess it would depend on, you know, the break in service, but yes, they would be eligible. And if they didn't have more than two years in a break in service, they would be eligible to serve, you know, additional two years to reach that eight-year maximum.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what you're asking. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're asking if they serve six consecutive years, then they don't reapply, and they have a two-year break, then they reapply, they can be appointed for up to another eight years consecutively.
Correct, yes. And they could repeat that-
So it doesn't matter what happens before, as long as they take two years off-
Yes.
They can go from there?
Correct.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure that was the language.
Any other questions from council? This isn't a public hearing, right? Just a-
No.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The Duncan Amendment is approved. Next item, Amy.
Next item is department reports, and there are none. The next is the city manager items, and there are none. So the last item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Any council members have any items? The only thing I'd like to do, I'd like to close the meeting tonight in memory of a former council member from City of Lincoln, gentleman by the name of Tom Cosgrove. Don't think most of you know him, but many of us served with him for many years on various boards and commissions. He left office in 2013, but he went into the hospital Tuesday, and he passed away yesterday. So I would like to close the meeting in the memory of Mr. Tom Cosgrove. Thank you all.